Hello and welcome to study session number twenty five of daily memory lab. In today's study session, we will be seeing round five of E-way bill. Page number twenty to twenty six with this, the entire chapter gets completed for five rounds. After that, we will go to supply under GST, we will revise page number sixty two to sixty five, round four. And then we will go to charge of GST, page number nineteen to twenty seven. We will see the third round and we will see. Fourth, I mean, the fourth segment of this video will be page number forty four to forty nine, whatever we read yesterday. For as round two and then we will make an incremental progress of five to six pages upon completion of the above. So on that note, we will set our pre-study session intention. Now I am going to study for thirty to sixty minutes with full focus. In this study session, I lower down all my expectations and embrace imperfection. I may or may not get big breakthroughs in this study session and I am totally okay with it. I will most likely make mistakes in the next thirty to sixty minutes. And if I make them, I am not going to judge myself, I embrace my mistakes and reset my ambitions. My goal is not to achieve perfection, my goal is only to make a tiny progress in the next thirty to sixty minutes. On that note, let us begin E-way bill, page number twenty. Situations where E-way bill is not required to be generated. Notwithstanding anything explained above, no E-way bill is required to be generated in the following cases. Where the goods being transported are the ones given below. Liquified petroleum gas for supply to household and non-domestic exempted category customers. Charosin oil sold under PDS, postal baggage transported by department of posts. Natural or cultured pearls and precious or semi-precious stones. Precious metals and metals clad with precious metal. Jewelry, goldsmiths and silver smiths wears and other articles. Currency, used personal and household effects, coral worked and unworked. Where the goods are being transported by a non-motorized conveyance. Where the goods are being transported from the customs port, airport, air cargo complex. And the land customs station to an inland container depot or a container freight station for clearance by customs. In respect of movement of goods within such areas as are notified under rule. One thirty eight, subrule fourteen clause D of the state or union territory GST rules. In that particular state or union territory. Where the goods other than deoiled cake being transported are exempted exempt from tax. Where the goods being transported are alcoholic liquor for human consumption. Petroleum crude, high-speed diesel, motor spirit commonly known as petrol, natural gas or aviation turbine fuel. Where the supply of goods being transported is treated as no supply under schedule three of CGST act. Where the goods are being transported under customs bond from an inland container depot. Or a container freight station to a customs port, airport, air cargo complex. And the land customs station or from one custom station or customs port to another custom station or customs port or. Under custom supervision or under customs seal. Where the goods being transported are transit cargo from or to Nepal or Bhutan. Where the goods being transported are exempt from tax under notification number seven. Which are supply of goods by the CSD to the unit run canteens. Or to the authorized customers and the supply of goods by the unit run canteens to the authorized customers. And the notification number twenty six, supply of heavy water and nuclear fuels by. Department of Atomic Energy to Nuclear Power Corporation of India. Any movement of goods caused by defense formation under Ministry of Defense as a consignor or consignee. Where the consignor of goods is the central government, government of any state or a local authority for transport of goods by rail. Where the empty cargo containers are being transported. And where the goods are being transported up to a distance of twenty kilometers from the place of the business of the consignor. To a waybridge for payment or from the waybridge back to the place of the business of the. Said consignor, subject to the condition of, condition that. Movement of goods is accompanied by a delivery chalan issued in accordance with rule number fifty five. Where empty cylinders for packing of liquefied petroleum gas are being moved for reasons other than supply. Point number fourteen, documents and devices to be carried on by a person in charge of a conveyance. The person in charge of a conveyance shall carry the invoice or supply of bill of supply or delivery chalan as the case may be and. A copy of the E-way bill in physical form or the E-way bill number in electronic form mapped to. An RFID embedded on the, onto the conveyance. Except in case of movement of goods by rail or by air or vessel in such manner as may be notified by the commissioner. Carrying E-way bill number in electronic form implies that. Person in charge of conveyance can merely quote the E-way bill number to the proper tax officer. Tax officer will do all the requisite verifications based on that number. RFID's are radio frequency identification device used for identification. Invoice reference number instead of tax invoice. In case E-invoice is issued, quick response code having an embedded invoice reference number in it. May be produced electronically for verification by the proper officer regarding instead of. The physical copy of such tax invoice. In such a case, the registered person will not have to upload the information in part A of E-way bill for generation of E-way bill. And the same shall be autopopulated by the common portal on the basis of the. Information furnished in the prescribed form relating to E-invoice. The commissioner may by notification require a class of transporters to obtain a unique RFID and get the said device embedded onto the conveyance. And map the E-way bill to the RFID prior to the movement of goods. Documents instead of E-way bill, where circumstances so warrant, the commissioner may by notification. Require the person in charge of the conveyance to carry the following documents instead of the E-way bill. Tax invoice or bill of supply or bill of entry. A delivery chalan where the goods are transported for reasons other than by way of supply. Verification of documents and conveyance. The commissioner or an office officer empowered by him in this behalf. May authorize the proper officer to intercept any conveyance to verify the E-way bill in physical or electronic form. For all interstate and interstate movement of goods. The commissioner shall get RFID readers installed at places. Where the verification of movement of goods is required to be carried out and verification of movement of vehicles. Shall be done through such device readers where the E-way bill has been mapped with the said device. The physical verification of conveyance shall be carried out by the proper officer as authorized by the commissioner. Or an officer empowered by him in this behalf. However, on receipt of specific information on aviation of tax, physical verification of. A specific conveyance can also be carried out by any other officer. After obtaining necessary approval of the commissioner or an officer authorized by him in this behalf. Sixteen, inspection and verification of goods, rule one thirty eight C. A summary of every inspection of goods in transit shall be recorded online. By the proper officer in part A of a prescribed form within twenty four hours of inspection. And the final report in part B of said form shall be recorded within three days of such inspection. However, where the circumstances so warrant, the commissioner or any other officer authorized by him. May on sufficient cause being shown, extend the time for recording of the final report in part B of said form. For a further period not exceeding three days. The period of twenty four hours or as the case may be. Three days shall be counted from the midnight of the date on which the vehicle was intercepted. Where the physical verification of goods being transported on any conveyance has been done during transit at one place. Within the state or union territory or in any other state or union territory. No further physical verification of the said conveyance shall be carried out again in the state. Or union territory unless a specific information relating to aviation of the same is made available, aviation of tax is made. Unless a specific information relating to aviation of tax is made available subsequently. Okay, point number seventeen, facility for uploading information regarding detention of vehicle, rule one thirty eight D. Where a vehicle has been intercepted and detained for a period exceeding thirty minutes. The transporter may upload the said information in specified form on the common portal. Blocking of E-way bill generation facility, one thirty eight E. Blocking of E-way bill generation facility means disabling a taxpayer from generating the E-way bill. Blocking of GSTIN for E-way bill generation. Would only be for the defaulting supplier GSTIN and not for the defaulting recipient or transporter GSTIN. Suspended GSTIN cannot generate E-way bill as supplier. However, the suspended GSTIN can get the E-way bill generated as recipient or as transporter. As per rule one thirty eight E, no person including a consignor, consignee, transporter, an e-commerce operator. Or a courier agency shall be allowed to furnish the information in part A of form GST EWB zero one. In respect of any outward movement of goods of a registered person who being a person paying tax under composition scheme. Has not furnished the statement for payment of self-assessed tax for two consecutive quarters or. Being a person paying tax under regular scheme has not furnished the returns for a consecutive period of two tax periods. Or being a person paying tax under regular scheme has not furnished GSTR one. For any two months or quarters as the case may be. Being a person whose registration has been suspended under the provisions of rule twenty one A of the CGST rules. However, commissioner may on receipt of an application from a registered person. In prescribed form on sufficient cause being shown and for reasons to be recorded in writing by order in prescribed form. Allow furnishing of the said information in part A of GSTR, GST EWB one. Subject to prescribed conditions and restrictions, an order rejecting said request shall not be passed without the said person. A reasonable opportunity of being heard. The permission granted or rejected by the commissioner of state or commissioner of union territory tax. Shall be deemed to be granted or as the case may be rejected by the commissioner. It may be noted that the expressions transported by railways, transportation of goods by railways. Transportation of goods by rail and movement of goods by rail used in the provisions discussed above. Does not include cases where leasing of parcel space by railways takes place. Mister A, a registered person paying tax under regular scheme in Delhi has not filed GSTR one for the last two months. Mister B of Haryana, a regular return filer wants to generate an E-way bill for goods to be supplied to Mister A. Here, there will be no restriction in E-way bill generation. Uh, for Mister B who is making the outward movement of goods as he is a regular return filer. Mister A wants to generate an E-way bill in respect of outward supply of goods to Mister H. So in this situation, E-way bill generation is blocked for Mister A. Okay, so on that note, we have completed this chapter for five rounds, so we will not be visiting this chapter. Anytime in the near future, however, we will definitely be. Bringing it to our consolidated revision when we do like sometime before the exam. So this is completed now, successfully we have completed one chapter in GST, so that's like a big progress we have made. You can definitely let me know in the comments like how you felt about this E-way chapter after round one. And in about twenty five days, we completed this chapter for five rounds. So now you see the level of confidence you have about the chapter. Soon we will be approaching the questions which have asked, which have been asked in the uh back end of that chapter. We will do that for, we will try to do that for almost every chapter that we cover. So on that note, let us go to the next segment of today's study session, which is. Supply under GST page number sixty two to sixty five. Non-supplies clarified by way of circular. CBAC has clarified that following activities or transactions are non-supplies. Interstate movement of various modes of conveyance, including trains, buses, trucks, tankers, trailers. Vessels, containers, aircrafts, carrying goods or passengers or both for or for repairs and maintenance. Except in cases where such movement is for further supply of the same conveyance. Shall be treated neither as a supply of goods or supply of service and therefore not be leviable to IGST. However, applicable CGST, SGST or IGST as the case may be, shall be leviable on repairs and maintenance done for such conveyance. Interstate movement of rigs, tools and spares and all goods on wheels like cranes. Above circular shall mutatis, mutandis, apply to. Interstate movement of rigs, tools and spares and all goods on wheels like cranes. Except in cases where movement of such goods is for further supply of the same goods. Such interstate movement shall be treated neither as a supply of goods or supply of service. And consequently, no IGST would be applicable on such movements. In this context, it is also reiterated that applicable CGST, SGST or IGST as the case may be. Is leviable on repairs and maintenance done for such goods. Which of the following activities are considered neither as supply of goods nor as supply of service? Interstate movement of trucks between distinct persons for repairs and maintenance, just now we saw. It will be considered as supply, grant of mining rights by the governments to businesses, so. Only grant of alcoholic liquor license is only exempt, so. Mining rights for consideration by the government will be considered as a taxable supply. Services provided by an employer to the employee. Actually, this is, this should be the other way around, services provided by an employee to the employer. This will not be considered as service and of course lottery is a specified actionable claim. So therefore, it will be considered as supply definitely. In the preceding paras, we have discussed how to determine whether a, whether a given activity or transaction constitutes a supply. Once an activity or transaction qualifies as supply, one needs to determine whether the same is leviable to GST or not. Though the provisions relating to levy and collection of GST have been discussed at length in chapter. Here we will have a brief discussion, okay. Supply leviable to GST. For a supply to attract GST, primarily two additional conditions need to be satisfied. These are, supply must be made by a taxable person and supply must be a taxable supply. These two additional conditions have been discussed here under. A supply attracting GST can be made to a non-taxable person also. The restriction of being a taxable person is only on the supplier whereas the recipient can be either taxable or non-taxable. Meaning of taxable person, a taxable person is a person who is registered or liable to be registered under section twenty two or twenty four. Hence, a person who is liable to be registered but has not taken a registration and remains. An unregistered person shall be construed as a taxable person. Similarly, a person not liable to be registered but has got himself registered by taking a voluntary registration. Is also a taxable person, taxable supply, for a supply to attract GST. The supply must be taxable, taxable supply has been broadly defined and means. Any supply of goods or services or both which is leviable to tax under the GST law. On the other hand, exempt supply means supply of any goods or services or both which attract nil rate of tax. Or which may be wholly exempt from tax under section eleven or under section six of IGST act and includes. Non-taxable supply. Okay, now we will go to the next segment, which is composite and mixer supplies, section eight. Section eight of CGST act. Tax liability on composite and mixer supply, the tax liability on a composite or a mixer supply shall be determined in the following manner. Namely, a composite supply comprising two or more supplies, one of which is a principal supply. Shall be treated as a supply of such principal supply. And a mixer supply comprising of two or more supplies shall be treated as supply of that. Particular supply that attracts highest rate of tax. Let me just read this paragraph and we will close this segment. GST is payable on goods or services or both at the notified rates. Classification of any supply whether as goods or services, the category of goods or services is essential. To determine the applicable rate of GST on the particular supply. The application of rates poses no problem if the supply is of individual goods or individual services. Which is clearly identifiable and such goods or services are subject to a particular rate of tax. Okay, we will stop here from this place, we will, from this sentence, we will read tomorrow. So on that note, we have completed the second segment of this video, this is also complete. Let's move on to the third segment, which is page number nineteen to twenty seven. Charge of GST. Okay, so we started with reverse charge mechanism, round three yesterday, so we read till here. So let us continue from here. Services provided by an individual advocate, including a senior advocate or a firm of advocates. By way of legal services directly or indirectly. Legal service means any service provided in relation to advice, consultancy or assistance in any branch of law. In any manner and includes representational services before any court, tribunal or authority. An individual advocate, including a senior advocate or a firm of advocates. Providing service to any business entity located in the taxable territory, so in this case. Reverse charge will be upon this business entity. Services supplied by arbitral tribunal to a business entity, arbitral tribunal done by it and business entity has to pay the GST. Services provided by way of sponsorship to any body corporate or a partnership firm. So any person here, the person who is sponsoring is the body corporate, the person who is enabling the sponsor. Sponsoring is this any, any other person. Okay, body corporate or partnership firm located in the taxable territory. Services supplied by the central government, state government, union territory or local authority to a business entity excluding. Okay, excluding renting of immobile property, services specified below, services by the department of post. And the ministry of railways, Indian railways, services in relation to an aircraft or a vessel. Inside or outside the precincts of a port or an airport. Transport of goods or passengers. Okay, in this situation, central government, state government, union territory or local authority. Is the service provider, any business entity is the service recipient, so business entity has to pay GST. So this is. Point number five, point number five A, services supplied by central government excluding the ministry of railways. Indian railways, state government and union territory or local authority by way of renting of immobile property. To a person under, registered under CGST act. Here, service provider is central government, any person registered under the CGST act, okay. Five double A, services by way of renting of residential dwelling to a registered person, any person, any registered person. Okay, services by way of renting of any immobile property other than residential dwelling. So you can see this five is all about residential dwelling, they have given some exclusion of exclusion and then exclusion of exclusion. So like that, they have given, so five, five A, five double A, five AB, these are all. To do with residential dwelling and something to do with central government's services provided by central government or state government. Okay, services by way of renting of any immobile property other than residential dwelling, any registered person, any registered, any unregistered person, any registered person. Services supplied by a director of a company, body corporate to the said company or body corporate. A director of a company or a body corporate, company or a body corporate located in the taxable territory. Services supplied by an insurance agent to any person carrying on business. So done by insurance agent, received by any person carrying on insurance business located in the taxable territory. Services supplied by a recovery agent to a banking company or a financial institution or a non-banking financial company. Provider is recovery agent and recipient is the banking company payable by the banking company or the NBFC. Point number nine, supply of services by a music composer, photographer, artist or the like by way of. Transfer or permitting the use or enjoyment of a copyright covered under section thirteen subsection one. Clause A of the Copyright Act nineteen fifty seven relating to original dramatic music. Dramatic musical or artistic works to a music company, producer and the like. So the provider is composer, the recipient is the music company, so the recipient company has to pay the tax. Nine A, supply of services by an author by way of transfer or permitting the use or enjoyment of a copyright covered under section thirteen subsection one. Clause A relating to the original literary works of, original literary works to a publisher, so. Service provider is the author, recipient is the publisher, however, an author can choose to pay tax under forward charge. If he has taken registration under the GST act and filed a declaration in the prescribed form. That he exercises the option to pay CGST on the said service under forward charge in accordance with section nine subsection one. And to comply with all the provisions as they apply to a person liable for paying the tax. In relation to the supply of any goods and or services and that he shall not withdraw the said option within a period of one year. From the date of exercising such option. Second point is, he makes a declaration on the invoice issued by him in prescribed form to the publisher. Point number ten, supply of services by members of overseeing committee to Reserve Bank of India. Members of overseeing committee constituted by the RBA, recipient is the RPI. Point number eleven, services supplied by individual direct selling agent other than a body corporate partnership. Or limited liability partnership firm to bank or. Non-banking financial company, individual direct selling agents other than a body corporate or partnership or LLP firm. So recipient is banking company, so they are supposed to pay the tax. Banking company or an NBFC located in the taxable territory, services provided by. Business facilitator to a banking company, provider is business facilitator, recipient is banking company located. And payable by banking company, services provided by an agent of. Business correspondent to business correspondent, so agent of business correspondent is the. Service provider, business correspondent is the recipient and payable by the business correspondent. Okay, fourteenth point, services, security services provided to a registered person, any person other than a body corporate. And service recipient is a registered person located in the taxable territory. However, nothing contained this entry shall apply to department or establishment of the central government or state government or union territory, local authority. Governmental agencies which has taken registration under the CGST act two thousand seventeen only for the purpose of detecting tedious. Under section fifty one of the said act and not for making a taxable supply of goods or services. A registered person paying tax under composition scheme. Services provided by way of renting of any motor vehicle descended to carry passengers. Where the cost of fuel is included in the consideration charged from the service recipient provided to a body corporate. Any person other than a body corporate who supplies service to a body corporate doesn't issue. An invoice charging CGST at six percentage to service recipient. Any body corporate located in the taxable territory. Sixteenth, services of lending of security. Sixteenth, services of lending of securities under securities lending scheme of SEBI as amended. Lender that is a person who deposits securities registered in his name or in the name of any other person duly authorized on his behalf. And the service recipient is a borrower, that is a person who borrows the securities under the scheme through an approved intermediary of SEBI. Okay, all the above services have been notified for reverse charge under IGST Act. Where notification number ten as amended, in addition to them, following service is also notified by said notification. Under reverse charge for IGST purposes, any service supplied by any person. Who is located in a non-taxable territory to any person located in the taxable territory other than. Non-taxable online recipient located in the taxable territory. Thus, in case of import of service, tax is payable by the person importing such service. For purpose of the notification, notifying the above services under reverse charge mechanism, following explanations shall apply. The person who pays or is liable to pay freight for the transportation of goods by road in goods carriage. Located in the taxable territory shall be treated as the person who receives the service for the purpose of this notification. Body corporate has the same meaning assigned to it in clause number eleven of section two of Companies Act two thousand thirteen. As per section two clause eleven of Companies Act, body corporate does not or corporation include. A company outside India but does not include a cooperative society. Under any law relating to cooperative societies or any other body corporate. Which is the which is the central government by notification specify in this behalf. The business entity located in the taxable territory who is litigant, applicant or petitioner as the case may be shall be treated as. The person who receives the legal service for the purpose of this notification. The words and expressions used are not defined in reverse charge notification but defined in CGST Act, IGST Act. UTGST Act shall have the same meanings as assigned to them in those acts. LLP formed under, registered under the provisions of the LLP Act shall also be considered as a partnership firm or a firm. Insurance agent means an insurance agent licensed under section forty two of the Insurance Act nineteen thirty eight. Who receives, agrees to receive payment by way of commission or other remuneration. In consideration of his soliciting or procuring insurance business, including business relating to the continuance, renewal. Or revival of policies of insurance. Renting of immobile property means allowing, permitting or granting access, entry, occupation, use or any such facility. Wholly or partly in an immobile property with or without the transfer or of possession. Or control of the said immobile property and includes letting, leasing, licensing or other similar arrangements in respect of. Immobile property. The provisions of reverse charge notification in so far as they apply to the central government, state government. Shall also apply to the parliament, state legislature, courts and tribunals. Okay, so from here, we will continue tomorrow. So end of segment three. Okay, let's go to the fourth segment. Three point four four to four nine. Composition levy, section ten of the CGST Act. Then subsection one, notwithstanding anything to the contrary contained in the contained in this act. But subject to the provisions of subsection three and four of section nine. A registered person whose aggregate turnover in the preceding financial year did not exceed fifty lakh rupees. May opt to pay in lieu of the tax payable by him under subsection one of section nine. An amount of tax calculated at such rate as may be prescribed but not exceeding. One percent of the turnover in state or turnover in union territory in case of a manufacturer. Two and a half percent of the turnover in state or union territory. In case of persons engaged in making supplies referred to in clause B of paragraph six of schedule two. And half percent of the turnover in state or union or turnover in union territory in case of other suppliers. Subject to such conditions and restrictions as may be prescribed. Provided that the government may by notification increase the said limit of fifty lakh rupees to such higher amount. Not exceeding one crore and fifty lakh rupees as may be recommended by the council. Provided that, provided further that a person who opts to pay tax under clause A or clause B or clause C. May supply services other than those referred to in clause B of paragraph six of schedule two. Of value not exceeding ten percentage of turnover in a state or union territory. In the preceding fi- financial year or five lakh rupees whichever is higher. Explanation, for the purposes of second proviso, the value of exempt supply of services. Provided by way of extending deposits, loans or advances in so far as the consideration is represented by way of interest. Or discount shall not be taken into account for determining the value of turnover in a state or union territory. The registered person shall be eligible to opt under subsection one if. Save as provided in subsection one, he is not engaged in the supply of services. He is not engaged in making any supply of goods or services which are not leviable to tax under this act. He is not engaged in making any interstate outward supplies of goods or services. He is not engaged in making any supply of services through an electronic commerce operator. Who is required to collect tax at source under section fifty two. He is not a manufacturer of goods as may be notified by the government on the recommendations of the council. And he is neither a casual taxable person nor a resident, non-resident person. Provided that where more than one registered persons are having the same pan issued under the income tax act. The registered person shall not be eligible to opt for the scheme under subsection one. Unless all such registered persons opt to pay tax under such, under that subsection. Subsection two A, notwithstanding anything to the contrary contained in this act. But subject to the provisions of subsections three and four of section nine. A registered person not eligible to opt to pay tax under subsection one and subsection two. Whose aggregate turnover in the preceding financial year did not exceed fifty lakh rupees. May opt to pay instead of the tax payable by him under subsection one of section nine. An amount of tax calculated at such rate as may be prescribed but not exceeding. Three percent of the turnover in state or turnover in union territory. If he is not engaged in making any supply of goods or services which are not leviable to tax under this act. Engaged in making any supply, any interstate outward supplies of goods or services. Engaged in making any supply of services through an e-commerce operator who is required to collect tax at source under section fifty two. A manufacturer of such goods or supplier of such services as may be notified by the government on the recommendations of the council. And a casual taxable person or a non-resident taxable person. Provided that where more than one registered person or having the same pan issued under the income tax act. The registered person shall not be eligible to opt for this scheme under this subsection unless all such registered persons. Opt to pay tax under this subsection. The option availed of by a registered person under the subsection one or subsection two A. As the case may be, shall lapse with effect from the day on which his aggregate turnover during a financial year exists. Exceeds the limit specified under subsection one or subsection two A as the case may be. A taxable person to whom the provisions of subsection one or as the case may be subsection two A apply. Shall not collect any tax from the recipient on supplies made by him. Nor shall he be entitled to any credit of input tax. If the proper officer has reasons to believe that a taxable person has paid. Under subsection one or subsection two A as the case may be. Despite not being eligible, such person in addition to any tax that may be payable by him under the provisions of this act. Be liable to a penalty and the provisions of section seventy three or seventy four shall mutatis mutandis apply. For determination of tax and penalty. Explanation number one, for the purposes of computing aggregate turnover of a tag of a person. For determining his eligibility to pay tax under this section, the expression aggregate turnover shall include. The value of supplies made by him, made by such person from the first day of April of a financial year. Up to the date when he becomes liable for registration under this act but shall not include the value of exempt supply of services. Provided by way of extending deposits, loans or advances in so far as the consideration is represented by way of interest or. Discount. Explanation two, for the purposes of determining the tax payable by a person under this section, the expression turnover. In state or turnover in union territory shall not include the value of following supplies namely. Supplies from the first day of April of a financial year up to the date when such person becomes liable for registration under this act. And exempt supply of services provided by way of. Extending deposits, loans or advances in so far as the consideration is represented by way of interest or discount. Analysis, overview of the scheme, overview of the scheme. The composition levy is an alternative method of levy of tax designed for small taxpayers. Whose turnover is up to a prescribed limit, the objective of composition scheme is to bring simplicity and to reduce the compliance cost. For the small taxpayers, initially the scheme was designed to benefit the small traders, manufacturers and restaurant service providers. So the scheme was fundamentally for the suppliers of goods and only for restaurant service providers. Not supplying alcoholic liquor for human consumption. However, subsequently suppliers availing composition scheme were permitted to supply other services also. Though only up to a small specified value, this scheme is contained in subsections. One and two of section ten of the CGST Act hereinafter referred to as composition scheme under section ten subsection one. Under this scheme, suppliers of goods have the option to pay tax at the concessional rate of one percentage of the turnover. And the restaurant service providers not supplying alcoholic liquor for human consumption. Have the option to pay tax at five percentage of the turnover. Small taxpayers with an aggregate turnover in the preceding financial year up to one point five crores. Are eligible to pay tax at these rates in the current financial year up to an aggregate turnover of one point five crores. However, a person engaged exclusively in supply of services other than restaurant service is not eligible for this composition scheme. Stipulated under section, subsection one and two. In order to provide benefit of composition scheme to persons engaged in supply of services other than restaurant service. Whose aggregate turnover in the preceding financial year is up to fifty lakhs. A scheme to pay tax at six percentage of the turnover was introduced subsequently. A mixer supplier who is primarily engaged in supplying services other than restaurant service. Along with marginal supply of goods could also avail the benefit of. This scheme, the provisions of this scheme are contained in subsection two A of section ten. Essentially, the composition scheme under subsection two A hereinafter referred to as composition scheme under ten subsection two A is for. Small service providers like salon stylist, salon stylist, tailors, et cetera. This scheme provides an option to such suppliers to pay tax at six percentage of the turnover in the current financial year. Up to an aggregate turnover of fifty lakhs. Suppliers opting for composition levy need not worry about the classification of their goods or services or both. The rate of GST applicable on their goods or services, et cetera. They are not required to raise any tax invoice but simply need to issue a bill of supply wherein no tax will be charged from the recipient. An eligible person opting to pay tax under the composition scheme shall instead of paying tax on every invoice at the specified rate. Pay tax at the prescribed percentage of his turnover every quarter through prescribed form GST CMP zero eight. At the end of a quarter, he would pay the tax without availing the benefit of input tax credit. Return is to be filed annually by a composition supplier. Registration under GST law is compulsory for opting for the composition scheme. The provisions relating to composition levy are contained in section ten of CGST Act, chapter two. Of CGST rules two thousand seventeen, the said rules have been incorporated in the discussion in the following paras at the relevant places. As seen above, section ten stipulates two times of composition schemes, composition scheme provided under section ten subsection one and two. And then ten subsection two A, provisions relating to these schemes have been discussed in detail in the subsequent paras. So from here, we are studying afresh for the day. Turnover limit for opting for composition levy, section ten subsection one. Ten subsection two A, ten subsection three. Turnover limit in case of composition levy under section ten subsection one. Ten subsection one provides the turnover limit of fifty lakh in the preceding financial year. For becoming eligible for composition levy under section ten. However, proviso to section, the subsection one empowers the government to increase the said limit of fifty lakhs. Up to one point five crore on the recommendation of GST council. In view of the said power of the government, the turnover limit for composition levy under section ten. Subsection one has been increased from fifty lakhs to one point five crores. Wide notification number fourteen to two thousand nineteen. Fourteen two thousand nineteen, CT dated. Seventh March two thousand nineteen, however, the said notification further stipulates that. The turnover limit for composition levy under section ten subsection one shall be seventy five lakhs in respect of. Eight of special category states namely, Arunachal Pradesh, Uttarakhand, Mizoram, Nagaland, Sikkim, Manipur, Meghalaya and Tripura. In case of special category states of Assam, Himachal Pradesh and Jammu and Kashmir, the turnover limit of one and a half crores will apply. Thus, if the aggregate turnover of a supplier in a state or union territory. Other than special category states except Assam, Himachal Pradesh and Jammu and Kashmir is up to one point five crores in the preceding financial year. Said supplier is eligible for composition scheme under section ten subsection one. Further, it is important to note that the aggregate turnover is computed on all India basis for a person. Having same permanent account number, refer the refer to the definition of aggregate turnover discussed in subsequent paras. Okay, a shoe dealer Prithviraj has offices in Maharashtra and Goa, he makes interstate supply of goods from both these offices. In order to determine whether Prithviraj is eligible to avail benefit of composition scheme, turnover of. Both the offices would be taken into account and if the same does not exceed one and a half crores in the preceding financial year. Prithviraj can opt to avail the composition levy for goods or for goods. For both the officers in the financial year. So one thing to note here is, this is still talking only about goods, okay? In this example, they have specified only about goods, anyway, we will see if there is any distinct distinction between goods and services or. It this one point five is for both. Turnover limit in case of composition levy under section ten subsection two A. Okay, further, the option of a registered person to avail composition scheme under section ten subsection one shall lapse. With the effect from the day on which his aggregate turnover during a financial year exceeds the threshold limit of one and a half lakhs. And seventy five lakhs in eight specified category states. Section ten subsection two A provides the turnover limit of fifty lakhs. In the preceding year for becoming eligible for composition levy under section ten subsection two A. So I think this two A is for services. A hair stylist, blue barber, has his salon. A hair stylist, Bilu Barber, has his salon in Delhi and Haryana making inter- interstate supplies. In order to determine whether Bilu is eligible to avail benefit of the composition scheme under ten two A, turnover of both the salons should be taken into account and if the same does not exceed fifty lakh in the preceding financial year. Bilu can opt to avail the composition levy scheme for services for both the salons in the current financial year. Further, the option of a registered person to avail composition scheme under section ten subsection two A shall lapse with the with effect from the day on which his aggregate turnover during a financial year exceeds the threshold limit of fifty lakhs ten subsection three. To summarize, a registered person opting for composition scheme under section ten should have an aggregate turnover up to one point five crores in the preceding year, preceding financial year and he can avail the benefit of the said scheme for the current financial year till the time his aggregate turnover in the current financial year does not exceed one and a half crores, okay? Similarly, a registered person opting for composition scheme under section ten subsection two A should have an aggregate turnover up to fifty lakhs in the preceding financial year and he can avail the benefit of the said scheme for the current financial year till the time his aggregate turnover in the current financial year does not exceed fifty lakhs. From the above discussion, it is apparent that the term aggregate turnover is of utmost importance. So let us understand this term in detail. Aggregate turnover under composition levy, section two subsection six read with explanation one to section ten. The definition of aggregate turnover as contained in section two subsection six of CGST is analyzed as follows. The aggregate turnover is the sum of value of all outward supplies falling in the four categories. Taxable supplies, exempt supplies, export of goods or services or both and interstate supplies. It excludes the value of inward supplies on which tax is payable by a person on reverse charge basis and the taxes including SIS paid under GST law. It is computed on all India basis for a person having same permanent account number. Further, explanation one to section ten clarifies that for the purposes of computing aggregate turnover of a registered person for determining his eligibility to pay tax under this section. Aggregate turnover includes value of supplies from the first of April of a financial year up to the date of his becoming liable for registration and excludes value of exempt supplies supply of services provided by way of extending deposits, loans or advances in so far as the consideration is represented by way of interest or discount. On combined reading of the aforementioned provisions, the method of computing the aggregate turnover for the purpose of determining the eligibility of a registered person for composition scheme for both goods and services can be depicted in a diagram as follows. While computing the threshold of one and a half crores, seventy-five lakhs or fifty lakhs, inclusions and exclusions from aggregate turnover are as follows. Includes taxable supplies, value of all outward supplies, taxable, exempt, exports and interstate supplies of persons having the same pan be computed on all India basis. Excludes CGST, STST, all GSTN says, value of inward supplies on which tax is payable as reverse charge, value of exempt supply of services provided by way of extending deposits loans or advances in so far as the consideration is represented by way of interest. Inclusion also has value of supplies made by a registered person from first of April of a financial year up to the date when he becomes liable for registration under this act. The value of exports and interstate supplies are relevant only while determining the aggregate turnover of the preceding financial year. These values are not relevant for determining the aggregate turnover of the current financial year in which the composition supplier has opted for composition levy as he is not permitted to make interstate supplies and exports in the said financial year. Rates of tax under composition levy scheme, ten subsection one and ten subsection two, two A, read with rule seven. The mean rule seven prescribes the rates at which tax is payable by a registered person opting for composition levy composition levy under section ten subsection one and composition levy under ten subsection two A. Rates of tax in case of composition levy under ten subsection one. A registered person opting for composition levy under section ten subsection one shall pay tax calculated at the prescribed rates during the current financial year instead of the tax payable by him under regular scheme. Okay, category of registered persons, manufacturers other than manufacturer of noticed notified goods like ice cream, pan masala, tobacco, aerated waters, fly ash bricks, fly ash aggregate, fly ash blocks, bricks of fossil meals or similar silicious earths, building bricks, arthan or roofing tiles. So they are eligible for half percent of turnover in the state or union territory. Second category, suppliers making supplies referred to in clause B of paragraph six referred to as restaurant service discussed in the under this chapter. Two and a half percentage of the turnover in the state or union territory, any other composition, any other supplier eligible for composition levy under section ten of CGST Act and chapter two of CGST rules, half of half percentage of turnover of taxable supplies of goods and services in the state or union territory. Students may note that the aggregate turnover of preceding financial year is relevant for the purpose of determining eligibility to avail composition scheme but the tax has to be paid in accordance with the applicable rates on turnover or turnover of taxable supplies in case of third category of registered persons above in a state or union territory. The concept of turnover in the state or union territory under the composition levy has been explained subsequently in this chapter. Okay, so I won't deny that I have a lot of open loops. But anyway, we have done our job today. We showed up and we read the preceding revisions which fell due and we read six new pages today. So on that note, I will be leaving uh for the day. I will meet you tomorrow with another study session with the progress of maybe another six new pages. Thank you so much for joining today. I will see you tomorrow. Bye bye.